In Board Docs and for the public, there are the revisions. And Ms. McLaughlin, she checked and what we had done originally, we posted originally a redlined version of the most recent revisions, but then later on today, we posted a cumulative changes. So, thank you for checking, for finding that, Ms. McLaughlin, because I think that's probably the easiest document to work from. I think what the-
Before we go on, which, okay, because I'm on Board Docs right now, so-
Cumulative, redlined cumulative changes.
Okay, hold on just a second. I have policy, the first one is policy draft redlined, the bottom one, thank you.
Bottom one.
Okay.
Yeah, we have those.
So, Ms. Dernakovacs, if I have a redlined, no, if I have a blue lined, blue lined, is that same as that one?
It is, but I think it's easier, she's going to pass out these, because the blue lined copy is the copy with the most recent revisions. I think it's, yeah, I think it's important.
Okay, okay.
I think, Board members, it's important for you to know a couple things, that there, we feel on the Governance Committee, there was a thorough vetting, there were five meetings on this, correct me, Mr. Plattenberg, if I'm wrong, I believe there were five, and also, Mr. Plattenberg and his staff met with community members at various times to, you know, address their concerns, because we have been seeing some of those things in our mail. I think the, thank you. I think the other thing is, in general, what you will see, what the changes to the policy made, basically, the School Board retains final authority on all applications, and we will go through that wording and that changes. Elementary schools have been taken off the list and are only considered by School Board member request, and then that would have to be an individual member and then come to the full Board. And we will look at community input and involvement from the initial site evalu-, from the initial site evaluation visit. There are plenty of opportunities for community and Board members to weigh in, whether or not the Board member, that the cell tower is going in the Board members jurisdiction or not. So, we can go over this, Mr. Plattenberg, I will let you talk and guide us through this.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. So, basically, what we did is, we had a number of governance meetings where we went ahead and dissected really the purpose and intent of the School Board policy regarding cell towers. We had a group, an advocacy group, that was pretty passionate about some of the beliefs that they felt needed to be addressed. They identified a series of items, in the latest iteration, I saw that there were six items that they identified, that they felt were really significant, regarding safety and security, preserving land for school use, no elementary schools, as Ms. Dernakovacs mentioned, they also wanted no middle schools or no high schools, by exception only, and minimum setbacks. If any community opposition, the application wouldn't move forward, no easements, thank you, for adjoining properties to provide telecom service, and then third-party evaluator, Center for Municipal Solutions be contacted by FCPS. Out of, out of all the feedback that we got from this group, we felt like the purpose and the intent was addressed in terms of having more School Board involvement, also in terms of terminating or determining whether or not to move forward, the individual Board members from those actual magisterial districts, and also more community involvement and engagement early on, to where the School Board member was engaged with the notification of the community. One of the iterations and concerns was that it wasn't until way down the road that School Board member would find out. In addition to that, we felt that out of each of those elements, we kept and we preserved the safety and security component, we took a look at that, a lot of the information that they provided, the advocacy group provided towards the end, a lot of it, in looking through it, was kind of kluge, I admit, I'm not a doctor, but our staff did the best to take a look and any comparison and any data that was provided and see, and vet it, basically. And what we found was that some of the, it was interesting, some of the groups, in the materials that were represented, that presented to us by the advocacy groups, were actually groups that had been contacted and contracted in years prior by the School Division and also by the county, to determine whether or not we were getting as much as we possibly should in terms of pay and fee, and in fact, that group found that we actually were getting paid more and had a better deal than any other jurisdiction in the county, whether it be the General County or the Park Authority or so forth. So, it's kind of interesting that that information was assistive, but that we also found that we had those connections already, that we weren't communicating or articulating. But we do feel that this policy does allow for more inclusion in terms of the community and the School Board involvement. We do believe it, as Ms. Dernakovacs said about the no elementary schools, we do, unless School Board member brings it forward and finds it compelling for the, for the body to consider. We, the third-party evaluator, we did contact the Center for Municipal Solutions, and we did talk to folks there, my staff did talk to folks down there, and really, some of the things that they told us is that a lot of the work that they do has a lot to do with the equivalent of what Fairfax County has in a more sophisticated, comprehensive master plan, and the 2232 process and the legislative processes associated with it. So, it was good discussion with that. One of the things the advocate members provided us was a recommendation about our testing of our facilities, we, an example, he had asked that, you know, you should test on the interior of your buildings as well. Well, we did do that, but we didn't do it during the times that he said would be more appropriate. And we found that when we tested it, when students were in the building, we found that in one of the tests that we did, we immediately went ahead and applied that, it was better inside the building than it was outside the building. There are a number of variations and reasons why you get different readings and so forth, because of routers, individual cell phones, computers that are on, et cetera, and all the technology that's been used. So, we found some value in having, to my point, the advocacy group being involved and really passionate about this. We do feel that we've provided with you what we think is the best of both worlds, we do think it does give you, for consideration purposes tonight, all of those elements that those groups, and certainly through the Governance Committee process, to present finally, hopefully, to the School Board this evening, for you all, to determine whether or not there's a desire or will to go ahead and incorporate some of these conditions. Because, as you'll recall, we've had situations in the past where cell tower issues became, the School Board member, the elected official, became the spearhead on the target, if you will, of opposition groups. So, we tried to accommodate all of these things, and we're here to answer any questions you may have associated with it. Thank you.
All right. I have Ms. Hines, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders, and followed by Ms. Strauss.
Okay, thank you, I'm going to try to be quick, but I have a bunch of clarifying questions, really, just to make sure I understand what the language changes mean, okay? So, the first one, and I'm looking at the redlined version, where it says, "Where placement has been addressed, to provide access to school properties where placement has been addressed." What do we mean by that?
The actual physical location of where it's going to be placed on the site, there was a lot of conversation about proximity to the school and so forth, and really buffer zones and so on.
When we say "has been addressed," that passive voice is confusing me, by whom? Who has, who has, and what do we, I'm just, I'm a little bit, yeah, where placement has been addressed, who's addressed it, and what criteria, I mean, I'm just wondering what that means.
It is in reference, really, to the further down in the document, where it talks about the School Board member and the process associated with it.
Okay.
But it's a very good question.
Okay, thanks, then, so it would kind of say, as, kind of as described below, and that's just for me, we don't have to change it, I just want to make sure I understand, that we're not talking about anything that's not within this policy. Okay, all right, thanks. The next, the next, that same paragraph, we added, "For the safety and security of citizens, promote commerce, and enhance." So, basically, these are the criteria that we have to meet in order to provide access, right? And we've, we've added the safety and security of citizens and all that. I'm just wondering, I see an "and" there, so does that mean that anytime we place a cell tower, we have to, that, that placement has to meet all those criteria, or can it be one or two, or, it's an "and," so does that mean all?
No, it does not mean all. The intent is really, anything that expands the ability for our communication and connectivity really is always enhancing our educational opportunities, in terms of broadcasting, especially as we go further, further to one-to-one.
Okay, so maybe just because, I don't know, because this is a policy, maybe we could put an "or" instead of an "and," because to me, it looks like we have to meet all three. I can just see people complaining about that, coming to say, "Well, you didn't meet all three, so you're breaking your own policy." Does anyone in Governance want to address that, or?
Well, Megan wants to, and then I will, go ahead, you said you want to-
Yeah, again, I think it is intentionally meant to be an "and," I mean, we always need to make sure that the, for the purposes of putting in a tower, that A, we're looking at safety and security of citizens, it's promoting commerce, and enhancing instructional programs, as well as, and that could be, as Jeff and I talked about earlier today, if we're moving toward more digital tools in the school buildings, you're going to need more bandwidth, and then as well as to obtain revenue for the benefit of FCPS. I mean, if any of these things, that, again, it's just purpose, this isn't, this isn't saying you have to meet this, it's just, what is our purpose? Our purpose is all of these things, it's this, 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 and this, as well as. So, the purpose part isn't the criteria part, so maybe that might help. But that, that section one is not, clear this hurdle, and now you get to, you know, put in a tower. This is why we're even entertaining towers on our properties, and it's for these reasons, it's these reasons, and that's why "and" I think is appropriate, not "or."
And, and if I may, I just want to interject, the "and" was in the previous policy, but it said "and too," and I think it was to take out the "and too," just because it was implied. So, I'm, I don't know if that's what you're-
No, that's, that's correct. And I, and I think, Pat, that, that's my recollection as well, when we talked about it at this, it, we, we were, it was always to enhance the instructional program, but we added the safety and security, that's what we, that's what we did, you know, to make certain, you know, particularly, and, you know, that's one of the reasons we took off the elementary site, you know, because that, those are one of the things that people didn't like it on the smaller properties. So, so there were things that, you know, that when you, when you, when we talked about the purpose, I think maybe, so go ahead with your questions, but I think like the, the thing where you, where we talk about, you know, the philosophy and what we're doing, as well as the authority, I think that's-
Okay.
These things in philosophy are the precursor, I don't know-
Okay, thank you, well-
To what is, is in the later policy.
What's coming later, okay, all right. I think I might still like a little clarity on that one, just to make sure, because when I look at that, you could read it to say, "To provide access, blah, 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 for the citizens of the county, consistent with the efforts of Fairfax County Government to do this." So, I mean, I don't know, I, I still think somebody could argue that we've got to meet all of those. And I, when I see, "To furnish appropriate coverage for the safety and security of citizens," that to me means that the coverage is necessary for the safety and security of citizens, right? We're not considering any other safety issue, other than that the actual cell coverage promotes safety and security. Okay, all right, so I may come back to asking for a little language change in there, if people feel comfortable with it, just so that I, so going down to the underneath philosophy, underneath the bullets, I think the bullets help a lot, by the way, thank you Governance Committee for doing all this, it's not easy. So, where it says, "The School Board shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws," that makes sense, and this is old language here, it says, "Community input will be solicited." Is that in the regulations, sort of delineating what we mean by that "will be solicited," or are we just leaving that kind of loose for, so we can make it up as we go along?
No, that is one of the things that, there was heavy discussion about how the, how the contact would be made with the community, and how the School Board member would be apprised of that contact.
Okay, all right, all right, next page, the new red language on top, I had a few questions. An at-large, informed, the School Board, second sentence, "The School Board reserves the right to review and approve, disapprove." So, that sounds to me like it is not necessary to get School Board approval every time, that we can do these without School Board approval. "The School Board reserves the right to review and approve, disapprove, any application prior to any government approval." The way we do it now, the School Board does not approve, it goes directly to the Planning Commission, right? So, if, okay, I just, okay, I just want to make sure we're all understanding that that's what that means.
Yes. Ms. Corbett Sanders said it, it's approval if it gets flagged by any other School Board member.
Gotcha, okay, all right, so everyone does not have to come to the School Board, okay, thanks. And then, next sentence, oh, go ahead.
Just to provide clarity, though, as I understand, Mr. Plattenberg, any application that's coming is then going to be brought to the Magisterial Board members and the at-larges. So, I mean, it's not, any application that happens, at least a portion of the Board will be made aware of it, it's just if those individuals aren't concerned, then, you know, technically, unless another Board member hears about it, and, and that is something that we, we really fought hard on with Governance, was that it's any School Board member. So, you know, if, if the community does come forward and says, "We have a concern here," we have the ability as a full Board to look into it.
Thank you, because that brings me to the next sentence, and I was going to ask, it says, "A School Board member may request the application be brought," could we change that to "any," just to make it clear, if that was Governance's purpose?
Yes.
Yeah, because I, you know, because I think our, our practice tends to be that we give magisterial members some kind of preference in those things, but we're saying, anyone can, okay?
Yes, you're correct.
All right, and then, at the, okay, that sentence again, "So, any School Board member may request the application be brought before the entire School Board for discussion and/or vote." So, this is not like a forum topic, you don't need to get seven votes to bring it to the Board, it's automatically brought to the Board, okay? Just one last question, sorry, the final sentence at the end, "Upon request of," again, any Board member, I guess, right? Last sentence there, "Upon request of any Board member, approval to place a wireless telecommunications facility on elementary school grounds shall be referred to the Board for consideration." So, "shall be" means, again, automatic, you know, it's not like a forum, it goes automatically, okay? For elementary.
Correct.
So, does that mean that we, that's the only way that elementary sites will be considered? Can we make that clear? Because what it says in the earlier part, it just says that there is a, on the previous page, says, "Board states a preference that wireless communication facilities should not be placed on elementary school property." But if we're going to say that the only way it can even be considered is by referral of a Board member, then I think we need to make that clear. Only upon request, upon request-
You're saying "only"?
Yeah, so, "Only upon request of a Board member shall approval to place a wireless telecommunications facility on elementary, be referred to the Board for," or something like that, or maybe just even add a sentence after it to say, or beginning to say, or maybe, I'm sorry, on the previous page, where it says, "The Board states a preference that wireless communication facilities should not be placed on elementary school property," add a sentence to that that says, "That will only be considered on the referral, by the referral of a Board member." I don't know, but I don't, I don't really care about the language, but, you're getting lost? I'm sorry, it's Madam Chair.
Miss-
Right, so, I just want, if, if what we're-
She, she wants more clarity that the, the last statement is, is, that's the only way it's going to happen, so-
Is it, is it possible, just, and if I'm out of my league-
No, go.
Please, could you just take that sentence and copy it from the authority section and include it in the philosophy, just as a, it's repeated in two places, to make it absolutely clear, there's a philosophy, and by the way, there's still a way to get out, and that's restated when it comes to authority about approval?
Well, I like what you did with that-
The Board states is a philosophy.
The, oh, yeah, the "only upon request" sentence should go under philosophy.
Under the philosophy.
Also, in both places.
Also, yeah, you're going to keep it in one place, don't cut it, just paste it in another place.
You're going to have it listed twice.
Twice.
Thank you.
Right.
I guess, yeah, and we should probably read that sentence prior that you were looking at, where you had changed "a" to "any," because I think if you, if you put in "only," it becomes a bit inconsistent with a School Board member's request.
Upon request of any School Board member.
Yeah, but we need an "only" there, I mean, because I think if we're saying that only, the only way an elementary school can be considered is upon the request of a Board member.
But doesn't that make it inconsistent with the authority sentence, the last, or the second to last sentence, or the last sentence in the inserted language, "Any School Board member requests an application be brought for discussion and/or vote," is that the same as approval?
I, I mean, I asked for the "any" for clarification, I don't think you need it.
No, but what I'm saying is that, isn't that saying that, 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 isn't that sentence lacking "only" then? The, if any School Board member can bring it to approval above, then to say, "Only a School Board member can bring approval of an elementary school," seems inconsistent.
Any School Board member can-
And "vote," which would, isn't that the same as approval? Isn't that what we do?
The Board's approval.
Right, so when we vote, we are approving or disapproving, so in the sentence at the bottom, where it says "approval," aren't we saying the same thing? Are they, are you saying that there's two different, I think they're the same?
I, I think the only reason that I'm focusing, and that we are focusing on elementary as different, is that it, it's something that's not on an elementary school, can be chugging along, chugging along, without the School Board even really doing anything about it. But an elementary school cannot be considered without a School Board member bringing it up.
And then it's only-
And that's different.
It disaggregates the two.
Right. Tom, I'll give you a chance to, so, yeah, think about it, and I'll put you on the list.
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Dernakovacs, I also wanted to make you aware, this Section 4 was supposed to be bulleted as well, for clarity, and so the staff's working on getting that done too.
All right, all right, it's not, yeah, it's not bulleted, you can see philosophy was bulleted, and we, we talked about needing authority to be bulleted as well. Ms. Hines, do you have anything else? Okay, thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, thank you to the Governance Committee for their hard work on this, and thank you, Ms. Hines, for your edits, I think that they add to the clarity of the document, I think that's important. Would also like to thank the community activists that have been very engaged in this whole process. I come to this with a little bit of a different background than many of the people around this table, and so, I, having spent my career in telecoms, so I've had less of a concern about the building of commu-, of towers on our high school grounds, primarily for a safety and security point of view. I think it's critical that we have the coverage, not only for students in the schools, but in our communities. And where I live in the county, there are areas that if we did not have access to some of the school grounds, we would not have coverage at all. So, so I welcome this, I think that this is a very balanced policy statement on how we go about in our approvals process, and it's very clear that we're actually getting in ahead of the process versus, am I correct, in the past, the Planning Commission would look at this either simultaneously or in advance of our looking at it. Right, and so that certainly shows a very proactive approach by this Board. One question I do have is regarding the, and the bullets do make it easier to read under philosophy, but I'm a little confused with the last sentence of the last bullet, because when you read it, it says, "Wireless telecoms facilities will be considered for location on school system sites, where facilities can be constructed in such a manner as to resemble other man-made structures and natural features such as light poles and trees," period, "Such facilities will not be installed on elementary, middle, or high school buildings." So, is that better to have a separate bullet that says we are not putting, and this is a question, are we saying we are not putting monopoles on top of any of our buildings?
Yes.
Okay, so we need that as a separate-
I'm sorry, my mic was not on, yes, that's what we're saying.
We need that as a separate bullet, because as it is written, it's a bit confusion, confusing?
So, like, such-
Yeah, so, "Such facilities will not be installed on elementary, middle, or high school buildings."
Yeah, that's-
Okay, so that's fine. The other thing that I think would be very helpful for this Board to understand is the legal limits we have on the approval of cell sites. And the reason I ask that is, I know that there's federal law, which is constantly changing in this area, and it's quite permissive, but I also understand that there was legislation adopted by the state last year, which also impacts the level of authority that the school system itself has. Can somebody answer that for us?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, I mean, we took a look at that, and that really didn't affect us, the way that legislative language was written, it was one of the things that was early on presented. I've got Bob Cordova in my staff, and also Tom Casey, who also took a look at that, and we found that there was nothing, that no bearing on existing on what we were talking about here, and everything that we have in terms of our, our monopole program.
So, we have full authority on that? And it's only, we're only looking at monopoles for this, we're not looking at poles that would have multi-sites on them?
Well, the monopoles, the pole itself may be a single pole, but we do have multiple vendors-
Multiple carriers on it?
Multiple carriers, well, up to a capacity of usually around five.
Right.
But, but if you think about that, you know, with the technology changing, I think there was conversation making it flexible enough that if things were to get to microcell level and so forth, it would accommodate for that, so we wouldn't have to go back through the Governance Program to initiate those.
And that's precisely what I was trying to drive down, is that the technology is changing rapidly, and the need for, to, in the seventies, they used, when we bought our cars, we used to say, "We have a need for speed," and now the telecoms carriers say the same thing, is that they have a need for speed for the capacity. And so, as we use more and more data, we are going to need to have cellular coverage or wireless coverage, and so I think this is a very balanced approach with the refinements that Ms. Hines has made.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Ms. Strauss.
I think that sort of looking globally at issues with cell towers on school property, by and large, when you have a large enough piece of land, and the tower is to be placed far enough away from the building, it does not impede what goes on in the school building, does not impede athletic activities, et cetera, and then also passes muster with your residential community around it, they seem to be an okay piece. I do, I think it's wise of us to say that it would be on exception only that elementary school grounds might be considered, because that has always been the problem, they're small pieces of property, and the community just is not comfortable with that, so I think we just start with that. And I think it's certainly the, the School Board members and at-large members, I think it is good that, that we know where applications are coming. I have a little bit of heartburn if, I would not want to see the School Board wrapped around huge debates with every application, particularly if it's on large pieces of property, a long way away, so that we don't spend a lot of time debating a particular piece, when perhaps we should be doing instructional issues, because I certainly remember in the beginning of cell tower discussions, we did, we spent a great deal of time debating this. And under federal law, the Planning Commission, et cetera, the local approvers of these things cannot turn them down based on concerns about the radio waves that come off of cell towers. So, that is not part of the, part of the discussion. So, that's my only concern, if this, you know, Board member, Board members want to become more involved in this, it is good that we know where the applications are coming, I think that's fair. And as I say, taking the elementary locations off the table, and I think defining, big piece of property, does not interfere with anything else, it's okay. And just, so everybody knows, there is an, an active application that's begun at Herndon High School, that is one of those, on a very large site, off in the middle of, of the field, it obviously has to go through the Planning Commission and the community and all the rest of it, but it is an application that has been put in and will move through. So, if any, my colleagues would like to come and see the site, I've already had the opportunity to see the site, and so the people can take a look at it, but it is definitely an application. Big field, way over here, interferes with nothing, so, anybody that wants to go for a visit, let me know, and we'll take you out there. Thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing that, Ms. Strauss, and I, and I think, I mean, I, I appreciate what you're saying about, you know, where you got your heartburn, but I think that was the whole purpose of kind of revising this policy, to make certain, you know, I think it's a new era where Board members become involved in things, where- become involved in things where maybe previously they weren't and so, and then when you were kind of the last to know, that was always problematic for the community.
Well, this is why we need to know, so, yeah, I agree with that.
And that's part of what we wrestled with in governance and I think where, where we have arrived at kind of a happy medium here. So I have Ms. Keys-Gamaro, followed by Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. I, I do thank the Governance Committee for their work as well as the community. I know, I've had some of these discussions prior to coming to the board, so I know they can be quite involved. So I do have concerns, understanding the twenty, at least having some understanding of the 2232 process and how as a planning commissioner, being concerned, being trained, that we didn't have a lot of leeway with respect to approval or disapproval with respect to federal law. So I'm just wondering to what extent we have sought legal expertise with respect to what our parameters are because it's my understanding, based on that 2232 statute that, or provision, we did not have a lot of leeway. So I, I just want to make sure that we've really looked at where our authority begins in light of those other provisions.
Jones? As a former planning commissioner, I remember those days-
I forgot about you seeing.
You know, those days when, when you had a lot of discussion on this one, on this particular issue. Your question is very appropriate, right on point. At the same time, I think we are dealing with us as the property owners, you know, there may be a comprehensive plan countywide, sort of policy or philosophy behind this to put these monopole cell towers on public properties as opposed to private properties. But as a property owners, we do have an absolute right to either grant or not grant to start the application process.
So you don't think there's an argument that we as school property, we would not be treated as a private owner but as a government entity?
No, we are just a property owner, we, so we can be treated as-
I, I would like to explain-
To expand on that, Ms. Moon makes an excellent point. You're questioned as a former planning commissioner. Once the application was filed, you're right, the legislative process and basically the binds of the Planning Commission was aligned with their charge, which was the applicant, which was on behalf of the school system, had already granted that authorization for the process to occur. So you're right, the, it was very limited in terms of the Planning Commission. The intent and purpose of this, of having intervention, if you will, notification of the school board member early on in the process, the community early on the process, is prior to getting that authorization process going. So it's to impede, it should, in the event that the school board member wants control, like you said, to really have effect over it, to control it from moving forward, that's why we built these measures in place, is because those opportunities were, it's, the ship's already sailed.
That's true. And so I think the, the crux of my question is to make sure that we've actually looked at, because I, you know, we live in a litigious society, slightly. And so I just wonder, have we made sure that we've looked at those issues from getting some legal input with respect to that?
We can certainly follow up with that.
So I, I'm sure there's lots of arguments that we could make. I can make some arguments, but the fact of the matter is there may be greater or lesser exposure depending on how you, and I think that we should be aware of what that exposure is. I know some of the concerns were, that I heard about were whether the safety, and I know we can't say anything about that, but do we, I know we had been, when I was on the Planning Commission, we were waiting for updated studies and does anybody, did we get any information with respect to that? Okay. And have we thought about guidelines for setbacks? For example, you mentioned the Herndon matter. Herndon case was, you know, a great deal of distance and is that something that we have considered or want to consider?
Yeah, we did discuss a lot of that in terms of setbacks. In fact, the advocacy group did want, and rather, I felt, the staff, we felt it was a little imposing, a 1,500-foot setback because that would pretty much eliminate a lot of opportunities on a lot of our sites. But we did have a healthy discussion about setbacks. I don't know if, Bob, if you or Tom want to add anything to that about where we ended up? I know that one of the applications in, you know, Crossfield Elementary was a very contentious, again, elementary school. And one of the things was, why doesn't the Park Authority put it on their property? Well, the Park Authority is putting it on their property from my understanding, when the conversation was, well, how far is their setback? Well, their setback's 400 feet and the tower's a 100-foot tower. But some people would like that setback to be 1,500 feet.
Sure.
Bob, is there anything you want to add?
The DPZ regulations require certain setbacks from the sides of properties, the fronts of properties, et cetera. Those are fairly minimal. When we go back to one of the very first questions about placement and where this is going to be addressed, we look at things like the capital improvement plan, activities, access by a road, how utilities have to be brought in. There's a combination of factors that are going to impact the placement of this and we try to put it in a location where those are all at a minimum. As Ms. Strauss was talking about at Herndon High School, it's out in the middle, it's next to existing light poles. We looked at the utility easements, 99.9% sure we're never going to build anything between those two turf fields right now, so we consider all those factors when we initially look at the placement.
Okay. And did we look at perhaps the way other school districts have looked at this issue?
Yes, we did. And again, my staff did a tremendous job of outreach of looking, not only at the school divisions, about their approach and their application. We found that where a lot had the components that we had in them and then a lot of them had some of the components that were being asked for. I don't know if you guys want to add anything to that?
Over the years, we've actually met with Arlington, Montgomery, officials from Loudon County, and many of those jurisdictions were behind where we were at. I guess our proximity closer to the Beltway, the cell towers came in sooner, but they in fact have borrowed a lot of the policies and regulations that we in fact use.
And then I, I just kind of throw this out there like a bomb and then duck, but, you know, I don't, they said if, if a school board member is notified, then there's some responsibility. Did we think about defining what that responsibility would be? You know, I mean, is it okay, for example, for a school board, not that I would suggest doing this, but based on the way this is written, you, a school board member could receive information regarding a particular possibility and they don't have an obligation to bring it to the board, so, or to make anyone aware of it. So is, should we think about a procedure for that? I just leave that as a consideration.
Okay, I, I appreciate that.
Ms. Darnett-Cofax, could we just clarify her question there? I think that's why it was saying a school board member can bring it forward that way.
Yeah.
It's not being left just to magisterial or at-large.
Right, I think she's saying something different. You can speak for yourself, but she's saying what if that person brings, keeps the information to themselves? Right, is that, is that what you were saying?
I said I was ducking.
She said she was throwing a bomb, so I figured that, that's, I, I would, you know, we, we can think about additional statement that has to be made or, but I think as we looked at this in the Governance Committee, we were banking on the integrity of our colleagues and, and didn't feel that that language is necessary, but, you know, it's something to be considered. And, and I do appreciate all of my lawyers on this. We thought we were, you know, we're good, but we're, you know, Mr. Wilson was on the committee, but the three of us and Megan's very detailed as well as Sandy, but we are not lawyers, so I appreciate all of your questions as lawyers. I think that's important, but-
No, I think this is really good. I just want us to really think about what we're, what we're doing and, and I think you guys did a great job.
Well, thank you. Mr. Wilson, our other lawyer.
One of many. That's the, the nature of this community we live in. So first, I would, I would encourage the board to consider the, that this was passed out of committee unanimously. So to the extent we make changes today, which I think the changes that I've heard all sound in a good spirit and reasonable changes, I think that, that, I think the community expects things to move forward and, and for us to adjust our policies as we see fit. I think if we can get this, these changes made today, that would be definitely a, a step in the right direction. So I just wanted to comment just briefly on a couple of points that Ms. Karen Keys-Gamaro brought up because I think that we did talk about them. So with regards to other jurisdictions and setbacks, you know, there is, there are jurisdictions that have setbacks. There are jurisdictions that have prohibitions. You know, if you, if you look in Europe, they have, you know, sometimes very significant setbacks and with regards to schools. So it is something that I think in the, in the new world of technology and telecommunications, different jurisdictions are handling it different ways and, and I think that the comment about, you know, Fairfax has tried to be a leader and, and moving forward both to help our community with improved telecommunications, but also being mindful of safety of the kids is, is accurate. So I, I think that, that the, the statement we make about our preference to not have them on properties of elementary schools is a reflection of sort of where we came to in that conversation in committee, was that that was a place where we thought, you know, hey, it's our preference to just not put these on the schools. I personally would have approved a stronger language because I think that it is the case that elementary schools, I think, are, tend to be very small properties or smaller properties. And so you naturally run into the types of problems where towers being very tall, elementary school playgrounds coming up close to property lines, that you have this natural tension between the proximity of towers and to the children. So I would have probably supported stronger language there. And I think one question I would have for you, Mr. Plattenberg, is with the changes to the policy, I assume that there will also be an update to the regulation. Have you thought about how you would deal with that change in the regulation with regards to elementary schools?
Absolutely. I mean, the whole thing is parity and consistency, so we, in, in fact, I'm glad you bring that up, Mr. Wilson, because in the Governance Committee meetings, we talked about and showed the artifacts that we use, the checklist that we have and so forth. And those artifacts are the kinds of things that would be reflected in the subsequent regulation. So it's consistent with the policy.
So because we treat now elementary schools, we highlight them in the policy, will there be some way that they are treated differently?
And highlighted as well, yes.
In, in the regulations?
Absolutely, because, I mean, it, it will reflect-
Okay.
-board vision and policy.
Yeah, I think that that's the sort of thing that I think board members would want is to, to, you know, even if they are more passive with regards to cell tower application, that they're sort of like, hey, this is one of the elementary school ones, so take notice, you know, if that comes in and, and so that we, we don't have a, we minimize the risk of board members not being sort of on the job and allowing something to move forward without sort of flagging that obvious point of tension. So, and where, where are we on the, the regulations being revised? Have you started that process? When could we expect to see those?
Yeah, we started concurrently originally and then we realized that when we were submitting the regulation with the policy, that the governance was looking at board policy, not administrative. So we will be coming forward with the revision of the regulation. I don't know, do you guys, Tom, do you have an idea on the timeline for that? So it can be relatively quickly. So we're fairly responsive as staff, as you know, so we'll be happy to go ahead and-
Yeah, so once those are, are ready to be promulgated, if you could send those to us so that we can have sort of the full package of information, so that we can see them and make sure that sort of what the regulations are implementing match our idea of what's in our policy.
Well, certainly go with Dr. Brabran and I'm sure he'd want to share at a chairs and have a conversation in some format to share with the rest of the group. I don't know how he chooses to do that, but I'll defer to the superintendent.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I totally will defer to the regulation development being in the purview of the staff, but I for one would like to see, see that. Okay, so you mentioned that there's an application pending at Herndon High School and are there any other current applications?
Yeah, since we, since we began, Mr. Wilson, we've had three that have come back up. Westfield High School was approved in 2009 and from what I understand, you know, I don't know specifically, but there was, the carrier pulled back at the last minute. Now there's a desire to expand coverage in that area, so it's back again. So it's Westfield, Herndon High School, as you heard, was mentioned earlier, and then West Springfield High School for additional coverage has just come to us. So we have three that currently are recent site interest, one I said has renewed. And I'll also mention though that between 2011, 2015, 10 new cell towers were erected and constructed on our locations. And in this timeframe, 24 sites were turned down due to various reasons. And they included two high schools, six middle schools, 14 elementary schools, and two admin sites. So staff has been doing their due diligence and I think this does bolster the board's desire to have that.
Yeah, that, that's very good information. I had, I didn't know that, but are, are you able to share with us what, was there a typical reason for those applications not moving forward?
It was in the spirit and the intent of the school board policy and the regulation? Yes, sir. The, the existing one that was in existence, some of the location stuff, we looked at the criteria where if we were going to do an expansion to the school-
I see.
The limited size of the site, et cetera, the inability to have a location that everybody could agree to.
So the tower may have prevented a future expansion at the property of the-
Yes, sir.
-school facility itself, I see.
Yes, sir, for capacity.
Yeah, that, that's very good information so that, that we sort of know that, hey, there's already built in a bunch of requirements that, that when, when an applicant comes that we look at in terms of future developments at our properties, use of traffic flow, all of that information. I think, I think for the community, it's good to know that, hey, this isn't just, you know, that an application comes forward and we're looking at signing a contract to put up a cell tower that might generate some revenue, that there's actually, you know, as, as the, as the public owners of these properties, we're, we're looking to safeguard the, the, the best use of those for academic purposes. And, and so I appreciate that, you, you relaying that to us. So in terms of these three applications, who are the applicants for, or is there?
Bob, do you want to go ahead and articulate that because I'm not familiar with all the details?
T-Mobile was the original applicant at Westfield and, and they were on the fence and I think you know, they've backed out. Sprint, I believe, is interested. So that's a bit of a zoning issue now because that 2232 was approved in 2009 and that's, that's a rarity and probably a problem with that process that they stay approved in perpetuity once they get approved. At Herndon, there are actually multiple carriers interested. Verizon's the lead carrier, but I believe Sprint's also interested there and possibly AT&amp;T or T-Mobile. So there may be three carriers right away at Herndon.
So, so just to make sure I'm understanding, so we, Fairfax County Public Schools then is then entering into discussions with T-Mobile and Sprint?
No. The applicants, those are the carriers, they are both Milestone applications on behalf of the carriers. The carriers probably in 2010 and, between 10 and 2013, stopped entertaining building these sites themselves. They go to third-party builders. We will enter a ground lease with Milestone, but that's only after the 2232 application is totally approved at the end of the whole process. That can sometimes take six months, it can sometimes take 16 months to go through that process.
Okay, and the ground lease is, is where the revenues to the school system are generated?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and then there is a, I, I'm not sure exactly how we received a bunch of documents as school board members, but there was documents that we received that showed that there's a management contract for managing our towers on our properties. And that is because obviously we want to maintain safety at each of the tower sites and, and, and is that entered into at the same time or is there one omnibus?
No, the, the brief history is that in about 2002, the school board entered an exclusive contract with Milestone. After the first eight towers or so were built by the carriers circa 1995 to 2000, school system got out of that, having the individual carriers build the towers. Milestone got the contract and till about 2009 or 10, they had that exclusive contract to market our sites. That expired and we actually reached out to- That expired, and we actually reached out to individual carriers, and any applicant can come forward technically. It's not exclusive to anyone. If, if someone Verizon or AT&amp;T says we want to build a tower, we would entertain that. The reality is the third-party ones are building these towers now. So we don't negotiate with the carriers themselves. Now, at that same time, a management contract came into existence about 2002, and that was to manage our eight towers and also market available spaces on those towers. Our towers are, are limited, they're older towers, they don't have capacity for much more than two carriers. All our old towers are basically filled up. So we got out of that management agreement, but we realized we still, and that expired about 2012. And I think it was in 2013 then, we went, put out a new management agreement, RFP, Milestone won that, and they're currently managing just our existing old eight sites.
But a new tower would presumably, would that fall under the management agreement? Like these three?
No, they own, the management agreement only covers the income and the towers generated by the, by the properties that FCPS owns, those original eight.
So for the three that just were mentioned, then, then we would, in addition to the ground lease, be entering into a management agreement with the rest of those towers?
No, it's essentially, the management agreement is, is based on a 10% of the revenue, and these new towers is a 4545 with Milestone. They do manage it, but that's not a separate agreement. So it's 4555. They keep 10% to manage all of the existing towers that they own, which right now is 10 total.
So it's built into the, to the ground lease terms?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. So given that, Jeff, how do we ensure that when, as part of the process that you go through as taking in the applications and then ultimately reviewing them and, and for these new towers, how do you ensure that, that lease contract is, is the best, you know, deal that we can get for the Fairfax County taxpayers?
That's an excellent statement. Back in around, I think it was two, November of 2011, and also in October of 2010, there was a group, CETA, that was referenced by the advocates that we look into. In one of the articles they provided, CETA was quoted in there a couple of different times, and to conduct a thorough review of cell tower programs, but we, they were hired by FCPS in 2010 to make any, to provide any comparisons, make recommendations. And it was submitted in October and found that we were incredibly successful in terms of the way we were operating our programs, that the gentleman explained, that Mr. Casey explained. And then the board supervised, followed the lead of that and decided to have a thorough review done on the cell tower programs being implemented by Fairfax County, FCPS, and the Park Authority. And the Fairfax County Wireless Facility Lease Assessment Report that was prepared by Alvarez and Marshall Real Estate Advisory Services was submitted in November of 2011. All of these rated Fairfax County Public Schools is one of the best-in-class, if you will. So to your point, how would I do that? What I would do is I would periodically go back out into the market, get these vendors to come back in again, and do an assessment on all the vehicles and all of the costs associated with it. Because as you've heard, we have evolved into the cell tower business beyond what my preference would have been had I set up this. But because it was new technology and innovations is the hallmark and the, you know, clarion call Fairfax County Public Schools, we got into the cell tower business where we had our own towers, where we had other people manage towers, to where now we have this basic lease agreement that you heard about that's a little more turnkey. But that, that would be how I do it periodically, just like everything else, have some group outside, external. Because internally, we have incredible talents, as you've heard, but I prefer for our communities to have a third-party outside agency to go ahead and take a look at that. And certainly, we could contract for the school board, if that's their desire, to go ahead and put in our budget for funding or funding from the cell tower program, to pay for a periodic timeliness of that kind of an assessment. I'd be happy to do that and report back to the board. That's just good management. So it's a good point.
All right, well, I appreciate that because I think that is something that when we talk about towers at schools, constituents will often mention to me, well, you know, you guys just want to make a little bit of money on a tower site. And it, and I think that in fact, you, you talked about what you do now, there's a whole history, as I'm sure many board members know, of a desire to, in collaboration with the Board of Supervisors, to promote the communications infrastructure in Fairfax County, and to do that through allowing towers in parks and in school sites and things like that. And that, that is something that I think really does make it incumbent on your staff to make sure that we are constantly going through that process to make sure that we aren't becoming complacent in making sure that we are getting, getting the best for the taxpayers in terms of our, our towers. So I, I, I don't know how that's picked up in the regulations, but I would, I would like to, you know, maybe if there's a way to add in some sort of reference that, you know, that staff will periodically do market assessments to make sure that we are, you know, ensuring that pricing is, is appropriate. Obviously, that's not part of an application process, that's more, more internal, but we do, our, our policy does defer quite a bit of, of responsibility to Dr. Braybrand and your staff to make sure that these towers are done in a way that is protective of the citizens of Fairfax County. Okay, so I have, I'm, I've taken probably way too much time here, but I do have a couple more things.
Mr. Wilson, can I just interrupt you because I know Ms. Kies-Kabara, she had a question on one of your questions.
Oh, yeah, sure, of course.
So like, I mean, excuse me, Ms. Corbin Sanders, I'd look.
Oh, sure. I will yield.
My question was, you were talking about the regulation, and it seemed like you wanted to see the regulation before we adopted the policy.
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure because typically, our remit is the policy and.
Yeah, we can't, we have to have a policy for them to revise regulations, right?
Yes, okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, it's just that, that naturally with, you know, we, these are fairly substantive changes, so I would like to get the catch-up, if you will, so that we can see it. And this, this last.
And Mr. Wilson, I'll just remind you, we do have three committee reports. I know you need to get your questions, and I want you to, just if we can, just.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I will, I will try to be as. So one question, and maybe Ms. McLaughlin brought this up, one comment that was consistently raised to me from constituents was to bring in a third-party municipal telecommunications consultant to advise, that, that routinely advises municipalities with regarding, you know, the types of questions that are being raised here today and other issues. And we had talked about that in one of our governance committee meetings. If she hasn't already had you update the, the board on that, I would appreciate knowing.
Yeah, I briefly made the, the comment in my, in my initial points, but it's an excellent point to deal with because one of the commitments was, what we talked about already here this evening was the setbacks. And then the other one was this outside vendor called CMS. And we spoke to the individuals from the CMS staff and talked about, Rusty Monroe, his senior partner actually there for CMS, and the comments he, we were making was that their firm predominantly deals mostly exclusively with smaller or rural municipalities. And they work with really zoning issues regarding cell tower placement. They don't negotiate with the carrier nor do any marketing for any sites or anything like that, but they could contract at an hourly rate should we want them to come in and help us take a look at what our already sophisticated planning process requires in that, the 2232 process and community outreach. So they didn't have any experience with school districts when we talked to them, but that doesn't mean that they can't do it because to me, it's a legislative process, whether you're a school district or another municipality or what have you, it doesn't mean. Their expertise would seem to be most appropriate in bringing regulations and a framework to municipalities who have never done this before. And one of the things their senior partner was kind of, you know, he was kind of amazed that we actually contacted him because he was talking that regarding our regulations, when he heard about our department planning zoning requirements and so forth, and following the Virginia state codes and laws, you know, he felt that we had an established, more established framework. But certainly, you know, we did have conversations with them. They, when we told them that we were steel in the air, CETA, who does represent larger school systems like Phoenix, Arizona, and that was one of the groups I was saying we could follow up with for future analysis and reporting back to the board, they were really kind of impressed that we were at that higher level. But certainly, you know, we're open to bringing anybody in and having them be a part of our, our team.
Okay, and then lastly, I, and actually on this screen that we're looking at now, in the, in the text at the very bottom, we're stating our preference that should, that this facility should not be placed on elementary school properties. If, if we could consider and, because a number of comments that we've received is about, you know, well, you know, this school has an adjacent park, could, and, and obviously the, the parks aren't ours, so we don't control what goes onto a parkland per se, and we don't have the ability to impose a setback restriction onto parkland property. I mean, that, this is, this we don't have the ability to do, I don't believe, as a, as a, as a board. But in terms of our philosophy and making a preference, stating a preference, if, one of the things that occurred to me today was that after the word "on" shall not, should not be placed "on," would people consider favorably or in close proximity to elementary school property since the, you know, and, you know, that would just be our stated preference?
Yeah.
We don't control it, but.
That's, I, I hear the intent, and then, then when you say, or within close proximity, that's a definable term, and therefore, I'm trying to think of what would the definition of close proximity? I just, I, I hear what you're trying to get, and I don't know how to codify it.
Well, okay, and it may be, I'm hearing the grumblings from around the table, so they, they didn't like it, so I won't press that point, but it is worth underscoring for everybody around the table, but that, that was a concern that was raised by the community over and over again. And hopefully, as you say, you can, in your process of the regulations, you know, we can somehow fit that in so that we make sure that that concern maybe is addressed. Thank you.
I have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Schultz and Mr. McQuine, and then I have a few go-backs as well.
And I do remind, we have, we do have people waiting for the 6:30 meeting. Thanks.
And, and Ms. Strauss is one of the governance committee members. I really, I appreciate that very much. I will just say that as someone on the governance committee who did work on this for five separate meetings over the span of over five months, and then we had to wait almost three months to get this before the board, so now we're at eight months, and now we're hearing from Mr. Plattenberg that there's, you know, three pending applications. I'm going to express my displeasure right now that we've got this thing crammed in here, and so the only thing I will say is that I think it will be very harmful to the board's best practice and our reputation if we jam this thing through. So if it turns out that we need to launch into our work session with our committee reports and come back and finalize this later this evening, maybe we should do that. But it's either that or we just need to, you know, direct the superintendent and Mr. Plattenberg that we're going to need an additional work session to work through where people are on this, and that we're not going to entertain applications until it's finished. Because here, here's where I'm, I'm at, and I'm really concerned. If you do the research on this, Milestone is the monopole company. That's it. It's the only game in town. And we're certainly very appreciative that, you know, they, Milestone is, serves on the foundation for Fairfax County schools. They've worked in, in volunteering and serving on the bond committee. So certainly, they have done, you know, very nice things in support of our schools. But cell towers on schools are controversial. And if you do an internet search, why that feedback's so bad? PG County, it got so bad with two of their most recent applications with Milestone that basically PG County schools severed their existing contract for future monopoles. It just proved too controversial. And so they just simply said, we're not going to have them on our school sites at this point in time, you know, going forward. And that was what some of the advocates had said to us, is why don't you put a moratorium on this? I, I'm not going there, but I do think that it's interesting to me that how can a school division just simply say, we, we just don't think it's in our best interest anymore to have monopoles on our school properties? And they can do that, and there's no law against it. And what we're hearing from our community is, I don't know what revenue you're getting, but we don't really like them on our properties, especially at the elementary school level. So with all that said, I just, I want everybody to know that, yes, we worked on this. I'm with Mr. Wilson that I look at some of the language and think we could have been stronger. You know, at one point, there was proposed language from the community that we were, some of us were supportive of, of saying, you know, unless there is a safety and security risk to the community, like you need the cell coverage tower for 911 calls, we don't want to be your first choice. Go look at other, you know, county properties, parkland areas, but let's not have schools be the first side of choice. So I guess, Mr. Plattenberg, it might help us because of the advocacy, and we're going to need to answer to the public. They had proposed for us that essentially, we would be saying, you know, if you, if a monopole contract proposal comes to us, they would demonstrate that there's no other alternative sites other than the school property. And yet, this didn't come back as a recommendation for the school board policy. Could you speak a little bit to that? Why we wouldn't want to have language that just simply says, it's not our first preference to have monopoles on school properties versus other county land?
Well, certainly, as this was said earlier, this came out of the governance committee with a unanimous vote. So I think maybe some of the committee members who approved it because this is school board policy and legislation might be able to address that because I really, I really can't. I do know that we've, the estimated total income collected by FY 2018 since the inception of this program has been $18 million, and the estimated FY 2018 income is $1.8 million. There's a distribution on that, but I think, I think those revenues are some of the reasons why, although some people feel that it's small by per school and per carrier and so on, are some of the reasons why some people are in favor of it. I do understand the opposition and what you mentioned because we certainly heard a lot from advocacy groups. But really, I don't recall in our process, I know we talked about that, about not going unless they've looked at the Park Authority or, there was conversation about that, but I'm sorry that I can't remember the exact, this and perhaps somebody.
That's okay. I mean, as someone who was on governance and, and worked on this, what I remember governance committee asked, and I appreciated, we talked a lot about this in the committee, that the, the board, or the committee members had asked staff to work with the advocates, to simply say, look, we, we want a collaborative approach to this. I mean, there's no reason to be adversarial between the school system and our community, so work on sort of a crosswalk of what the community feels would be optimal. And so what was brought back to the board, or, sorry, I keep saying that, what was brought back to the governance committee was, all right, here's what staff has drafted based on input from the community advocates, and we think this captures it. And then I received instead an email about two weeks ago from the advocates saying, no, in fact, you've, you've got probably seven different policy themes that are not captured in here. And I'm not saying I agree with all of them, but that's why, Mr. Plattenberg, I'm trying to understand, because the governance committee didn't have a crosswalk with you about, here's, here's what we put in, here's what we, we disagreed, because basically, we're relying on you guys as subject matter experts. So when you say it's up to the governance committee, well, the governance committee relied upon your department to do, to do this vetting, so.
If, if I could share, this is my take on it, and this is my take on it. We've worked on it for several months. Governance committee did come out with this as a consensus of where policy should go, which gives the board more involvement. And you all, this is a policy one. This is one you all have to decide. Do you want a more restrictive? This is a more restrictive policy. Do you want it more restrictive than the policy we're now proposing? That's a board decision. You know, it's not for staff to make the decision how much more restrictive, it's for the board to do. So if we need more, let me just, let me just finish. If, if we need more time to do it, I'm, we have all the time to want, I want to work with you to get the policy right as the majority of the board sees that the policy should be. So if it can't all happen tonight, we can find another time. But I, I do feel our staff did engage with our community stakeholders. We didn't agree with everything, but we brought something that has the board more involved and expresses a clear philosophy about elementary school not being used, or a preference for it not to be used, and. to be used, and it's just for the board to decide how restrictive. Other school districts, as you said, have gone more restrictive, and it's really a board decision to decide how far to move that pendulum.
Dr. Bray, wait just one second, Ms. McGlocklin, I just want, because I do want to just step in here a bit. I think you're on with that. I think, Ms. McGlocklin, it's going to be hard to, you know, when you get to consensus over five different meetings, there's a lot of different things that go into this. And I think, you know, some of the things we talked about, we were not in the meetings with Mr. Plattenberg, but some of the things he did talk about, you know, some of the requests were, you know, nothing on any of our property, a 1,500-foot setback, which would not allow anything on any properties. So what we're bringing before you today, and if the board, if this board here at this point feels, because of our schedule and because of our time, and we have members of our committees, you know, waiting to present to us tonight, if we're not ready to do that as a general body, we can vote on that in a few minutes. But I think, for purposes of this conversation, I think suffice it to say, there were several meetings, there was lots of conversation, not between, just between our board, our Governance Board, and Mr. Plattenberg, and the community members, and I think he brought to us a lot of those things, and some we agreed to, and some we didn't. So, and now, as Dr. Braybrand and Mr. Plattenberg are stating, now it's up to this greater board. What we brought is consensus, but if the board in general wants to change that, we can, and it may, as you said, take longer conversation than tonight.
So I appreciate what everybody's, the context is being laid on here, so I'm trying to go as macro as I can. Staff is the subject matter experts. So we said to the community, you know, "We want to be collaborative, so please work with Mr. Plattenberg." Mr. Plattenberg came back with a draft policy. The Governance Committee then understood that this is, through that collaboration, here's what we have. What I'm bringing to all of you tonight is, in particular, this is not a particularly restrictive bullet, it says, "Before any Monopole application to be placed on FCPS properties deemed feasible, the applicant must first provide thorough written documentation that alternative site locations or co-location is not possible, and an independently prepared documentation of need," in other words, significant coverage gaps, "are provided by a third party." The point being that if, in example, one of the cases we had, there was an elementary school, there was parkland right next to it. The community said, "Why do you have to put this on an elementary school? Put it on parkland." And that's what that bullet is sort of saying, that we don't want to be the first place that any Monopole company comes to. In this case, to my knowledge, Milestone's the only one, so I'm going to just say, but any type of company. So it worries me that right now, yes, there was consensus of the policy as it was drafted by staff, but we didn't do the crosswalk between, this is what staff has drafted, this is what the community was asking, and how do we explain to the community why the bullet point I just read is wrong? And so I think that is something, for the larger board, that I want to share with all of my colleagues who didn't serve on us with Governance, this thing is a lot bigger than maybe everybody realizes. I watched my own community of 700 homes go through a civil war about a Monopole being placed on our community pool. And in the end, it so deeply divided the community over multiple years, with so much rancor, the community, the cell phone tower company walked away. And so I'm hearing from people in my Braddock District, who are not pleased at all about the concept that any of these will land on an elementary school. And so, and now, it'll be interesting to see what we hear from West Springfield, which I happen to have communities that attend West Springfield High School. So I'm sort of wanting to just have us be eyes wide open, number one. Number two, we had better, as this answering board, be able to explain why we have what some would deem a very liberal approach to putting cell towers on schools. So-
I apologize, Ms. McGlocklin, the point that you keep talking about is a part of our 2232 process. I misunderstood that you were wondering that that's why it's not in the policy. I mean, unless I'm correct, the, go ahead and address-
Yeah, when in applications, quite honestly, I don't think we have the expertise to determine, if you want to use Crossfield as an example, where all the other locations are at. Some of that is on private property, so we don't know about that. But as part of the 2232 process, and the planning commissioners can speak to that, they have to prove that other areas, in other towers in the area, are not usable or available for co-location. And the Planning Commission has all that information, so they have to document that as part of that process.
Oh, okay, so what you're saying is, the, but that's why this bullet is slightly different? One is talking about co-location and need, but the other one is saying, "We just don't want to be your first choice." And what we found out was, we were considered an easier property owner to work with than the Park Authority. And so, and I don't know about the pricing and all that. So that's a concern for me. I don't, I don't personally want us to be the first land use choice for Monopoles, based on how the community is feeling about the comfort level on this. Mr. Plattenberg, just clarity again, what is the annual total revenue that we net for our Monopole program?
That's the $1.8 million that we're estimating for this 2018.
Thank you. So I want everybody to hear that. $1.8 million on a $3 billion budget. So when we have in our policy under purpose, and this is the language that I'm going to recommend, that we consider amending, when we say "under purpose," and this was, again, brought to me by the community as well, that we say, as well as to obtain revenue for the benefits of FCPS, people think that we're willing to trade off community angst and concern about these Monopoles on our children's school properties, for revenue that honestly, and yes, it's always nice to have 1.8 million more extra, but what is the trade-off in terms of people's comfort level of having these on our school properties? The other thing is, it says to promote commerce. I got to tell you, from, again, from a school system and a school board, our policy, I don't feel the need to say, "The purpose of having these is to promote commerce." That is not our mission in the school system, and I think it actually misrepresents where the board is on this, and it misrepresents the school division on it. So I think it's actually harmful that we have those two statements in our purpose. I think it miscommunicates. Essentially, what I was told is, we look like money grubbers and Aaron Brockovich corporations willing to, you know, put Monopoles in places that maybe not be in the best interest of kids, because we want the annual revenue. I don't believe that's what FCPS is all about, but that's the optics, and I think we need to be eyes wide open. So Ms. Karen Kiesgaumar, thank you for asking an earlier difficult question, because I feel like I'm kind of needing to ask some of those now. Anyway, I, I think in terms of some of the changes, I would say, under purpose, Ms. Hines was really helpful on this. I think under purpose, it is unclear, and sometimes it helps stepping away from something you've stared at for so long. So in that first sentence, I think it might be saying, "To provide access to school properties where proposed Monopole placement has been," instead of saying "addressed," "reviewed." And then that way, what we're doing is, we're kind of clarifying, what is the purpose of, you know, staff, you know, talking with, or looking at this thing? It's talking about, you know, where placement has been addressed, placement of what? So that's just proposed language, I think, could provide some clarity. And then with the rest of it, I would say that it's going to be my suggestion that we strike promote commerce, and we strike to obtain revenue for the benefit of FCPS. I don't think we should be leading with that. Obviously, we care about the safety and security of our citizens, and I think we care about enhancing instructional programs. Those two statements alone, I think, reflect better where we are as a school division. And then, Mr. Plattenberg, I very much appreciate that, upon the board's request, you did speak with Larry Monroe for the Center for Municipal, what is that? Yeah, yes, Center for Municipal Solutions. And I would just say that, and I want to share with my colleagues, the board was asked, the Governance Committee was asked by the community to meet with Mr. Monroe, because he's considered a third-party independent expert. We then said it was more logical for staff, so Mr. Plattenberg was very manable to it. We will need, I think, for public record, some sort of summary of that conversation, so that we can say, "The board tasked Mr. Plattenberg and his team to talk to this gentleman, and what was the result of that conversation?" Because we never had that in Governance, just so you know. Like, I mean, I'm finding out today how that meeting went, and that's not Mr. Plattenberg's fault, we asked him to speak to him, but I think there was a lost in translation with the Governance Committee, that we were wanting a report back. So I, as a next step, I wanted to humbly suggest, I think, something, because the more transparency we have, the more accountability we have on this, and we will be better positioned with our community to build trust. And I know that's what everybody wants. And I hope that my comments in this work session have come across in that manner, that I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to make everybody wear so much of what I'm hearing, and I want our system to come through this in the best manner possible. We owe it to our community.
All right, so you addressed that as the next step, you have that. All right. Because we are 35 minutes behind, and because we have many people waiting to speak to us, I have conferred with the chair, and we are going to halt conversation of this right now. We can, I will leave that to the chair, to see where we are after our committee reports, whether we want to address this later tonight, or if we will come back at a very early, soon work session to do this.
Just going at Fairfax, I'm sorry. Could I just get clarification?
Yeah, I suspect we'll have to reschedule this, because we're already behind, and we are not scheduled to finish until 9:30. I don't know what else to do about this.
Sorry, I have a problem with the continuity of conversation if we just break now, and don't pick it back up today. We cannot keep cutting off conversation, we've already done it once.
I understand, Ms. Schultz, but we-
I don't mean not, I don't mean not provide for our guests who are here, but we cannot just walk away from the table halfway through this conversation and just pick it up later.
I didn't say we were going to, now did I? I said, "We are going to."
Well, no, but the chair did.
That's fine, if people want to come back, we can. I don't think that Mr. Plattenberg can stay, I believe you have another commitment, but-
I actually did have another commitment this evening, but I can, I can see what I can do. This is my staff's second time coming back, and we, you know, the first time, we'd like to go ahead and get it concluded. I certainly always defer the superintendent for whatever he wants to-
Okay, well, we can, when we-
Oh, if we need you.
Okay.
You got your folks here if we need to.
Okay, all right, so we will-
We're going to have a two-minute break, and then we will begin with the FSEP Annual Report, and we will decide what to do about this a little later this evening.
Great, thank you.